Call the meeting in order, please stand for the pledge. Okay, get the approval of the minutes of March 6.
Some of it.
Set. Any discussions, any corrections? Carrying none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Can motion accept the financial payment and payment on the bills?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Got a budget amendment, Steve?
Yes, I want tonight, budget amendment number 2013 dash 014. To recognize the forfeiture of $9,800 of seed funds for the purpose of funding a human resources need assessment.
Okay, do I have a motion accept budget amendment 2013 dash 014?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we have a presentation of a certificate of special recognition, so if you guys would join me on the floor. Okay. Mayor Commissioners of the Town of Elkton, certificate of recognition to Mrs. Mary T. Johnson. Whereas Mrs. Mary T. Johnson has called Elkton home for more than 50 years, and whereas Mrs. Johnson has been a member of the Elkton Housing Authority since 1992, serving on various special committees of the Authority as needed, and whereas all the, through the past and current voluntary roles on community-based boards and committees, including the Cecil College Foundation, Union Hospital Foundation, Board of Directors, and the Town of Elkton's Ethics Commission. She demonstrates that a person's success is not measured simply in terms of title, but by their service and dedication to their community, friends, and family. Now, therefore, on behalf of the American Commissioners and the citizens of Elkton, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation to our favorite daughter, Mrs. Mary Johnson. And witness thereof, we have hung two set our hands and seal this, of the Town of Elkton on this 21st day of March, 2013, Joseph Alfonso the Mayor, Charles Givens, Earl Piner, Mary Jojo Blonsky, and Charles Givens Commissioners. Congratulations and best to... Again, thank you, Mary, for all you've done for the town. It's a good time, a long time you've served, and it's very thankful for you. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, Ken?
Evening, Mayor, Council. I don't have a whole lot to talk about, I just want to give you a quick update on the water plant, wastewater treatment plant, what do you think we did? We had another great month. January was terrific. BOD 2.7, discharging the plant. TSS was 2.0. Total nitrogen was 1.3. That's excellent. The total phosphorus was .05 average, just being discharged. So the treatment, wastewater treatment plant continues to perform outstanding. Water treatment plant is doing well, wells are doing good. We got a lot of things accomplished at plants. We, well, we did have an inspection, MDE inspected the sludge dryer and its solids handling, and it worked real well. It worked real well. I mean, it went well. We, I think I may have told you, I can't remember that, we did install the sprocket on the dryer, and it's been performing well. That was a big item we were able to accomplish. The, we, we had all the, we had all of our hoists in the treatment plant inspected for the year and load-tested. All the jib cranes and the electric hoists and that. That was, that's a big one. We had, we also accomplished all of our calibrations on our flow meters, wastewater plants, last month. It was, it was a big month for doing reports. We completed all our sludge reports, we completed our tier-two reporting, which reports, you know, our hazardous chemicals to our apartment and to MDE for their records. And we completed the sludge utilization reporting and the annual sludge generator reporting and a lot of reports, so we accomplished that.
Can I pull that a little closer to you, like?
That's about it, I'm about done.
That's why I want you to pull it closer, since you're down.
Perfect timing. But, yeah, everything is looking pretty good out there in the system.
Good, very good. All the money we spent on that plant is, it's doing its job.
It really is performing well. I, I get compliments all the time. We had, I had a gentleman from the County King down there at that meeting we had about a month ago, and he said, "Congratulations, this is the first treatment plant I've ever been in that doesn't smell." "It's not me," I said, "the mayor council spent a lot of money that, to make that happen." So it does come back, you know.
And we didn't remove all that fertilizer and after it to the silo, I think I would say it was full.
We, we are almost, we've been, we've been transferring material to the compost pavilion. And I have a farmer, Jonathan Quinn, that should be coming out at the end of this month to get it. We all, we don't have it quite empty yet, but we've been working on it for the last couple of weeks. So we're getting it? We're getting it emptied, yeah.
Well, of course, when the weather breaks and they start doing their stuff there, I mean, fine, some of the farmers probably could use that.
Exactly, well, this particular farmer, we have three farmers now that we've been, that are interested in coming to get the material. And, you know, we went through a lot of effort. We contacted Jessica, she contacted every farmer in Cecil and Hartford County, and we sent them samples of the material and the analysis and everything. And we didn't get as, as many, as much interest as I thought. But we did get several. They came down to the plant and, and, but one in particular, he farms in Kent County. And Cecil County, Kent County, and farms, different farms, not just his own, but he owns quite a lot of acreage. And, you know, I think he was a little hesitant at first, but he told me, I talked to him a few weeks ago, he says, "That material, I want to get every, everything I can," because he realizes now that he has increased his slop, his crop production, drastically increased it, and it saved them a lot of money in fertilizers. But it's, it's a very valuable thing. But he realizes, and that was what I was trying to tell you, that was the point.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thanks, Ken. Okay, Louis?
Okay, the first item I have is the KCI proposal for the Elk Landing well. KCI representatives here, Jeff Burnan, he's a senior hydrogeologist. Everyone steps up? I asked Jeff to be here if there was any particular questions. Basically, their proposal, Jeff, why don't you go over your proposal?
Sure. I heard it. Good evening. Thanks for inviting me. Our proposal is before the town to install, test, permit, a new well in the Elk Landing area. The reason that this, one of the reasons this came about was Delaware Geological Survey had done an investigation near the wastewater treatment plant about two years ago, and there were some, some promising geologic results that implied to us that there was a good opportunity to install a productive well in that area. And we had a meeting with MDE where we discussed the prospects here, and they were pretty clear to us that, that they weren't going to allocate additional water to the town, additional groundwater without demonstration of need, but that they were interested in, in the possibility of giving us additional backup supplies that we could use when the surface water treatment plant is inactive. And that has been an issue in the past. We like to have, MDE's been adamant that we have adequate backup supplies in the Town of Elkton. So the, the purpose of our proposal is basically that, to explore that area. If we find, from a hydrogeologic standpoint, favorable results, we'll install a well, test a well, go through the permitting process with the, the MDE, with the ambition of bringing on something that has new backup supplies, and also may address some, some distribution issues in the Elk Landing area. Again, having to do with when other parts of the system are not, are not available to us. And I think, well, I'm sure that the amount of the proposal is for $108,846. I mean, it's a, it is a fair amount of money. The drilling of the well, just the, the well driller is a $60,000 effort just to, to put a well in the ground and test it.
The, there's a lot of, I hate to say bureaucratic process, but there's rather elaborate process for getting this well ultimately permitted, if they will, if we want water, and includes the public informational hearing, and things of that nature, that KCI would present all the data there to support that in the public forum. So those things have to be done too. So it's not just a matter of drilling the well and finding water, it's actually going through a process by which we can have the application favored, I mean, changed into a permit. But they will not permit additional water, because we cannot demonstrate a need for more water beyond what the Maryland Department of Planning has already projected for the Town of Elkton. But they will potentially permit it for as a backup supply, which is what we're looking for in this particular case, as more water, backup supply. I think that, I think it was Ken's idea to put a well down in the Elk Landing area, which was a good idea, because it's a weakness down there in terms of, if we lose water, that's probably a very weak area, and it's very distant from where our interconnection is. So if you have a supply well there, it helps bolster that particular area, which is, includes the, not only the residents, but also some businesses down there, and the detention center in particular, where we will need water. So I suggest, and I recommend it, if you authorize KCI to proceed with this, I could get moving on it, because it'll probably take a couple of years to ultimately get to an endpoint there.
How's this work in conjunction with well number two? Did we get?
Well, we have to monitor, when they do an aquifer test at Elk Landing well, they'll monitor well number one or anti-well, and maybe other wells, I don't know.
Our purpose for the Elk Landing well would be, when we test it, to monitor the waterline response in well 2R, to see if there's any connection at all, any interference. When we discussed this prospect with MDE, they, they said if we get things moving on a track where, where what I'm calling well five now, the Elk Landing well, is, is trailing well 2R not too far in the process, they would try and, and merge the two applications into a single hearing. But at this point, they're on separate tracks in terms of testing and reporting. The, the only crossover would be when we test well, well five, we would be monitoring water wells in 2R. And they're some distance apart, and they're, and the Big Elk Creek is between them. To be hon, I don't think Big Elk Creek is going to make a difference in the, in the hydraulic response. I believe the aquifers are at least semi-confined in that area, but we, that remains to be checked.
How close is that well to the county line?
To what?
To like the county line, between the town and county.
Uh-uh, I'm calibrating. It's where Holly's workman or close, actually, it's very close in some respects, because once you hit Oakville, we broke a gooseneck, that's the county, it's not the town anymore, so from that, I would say 3,000 feet, maybe, maybe less, depending on where you put it, could be 1,000 feet.
So they're saying we can't use it as for a need, but we could possibly use it for backup. If the county had a need for it, could it be used to sell?
They, they don't, they're not in the water business anymore.
I, I know, but if someone else needed it?
If Artesian?
In that area.
I don't, so we're not, I don't know.
I don't know.
Actually, with the water supply, but the premise is that we're putting it down.
To be honest, I, I don't know the answer to that.
So we'd be able to use this as a backup per se, other than getting it from Artesian first?
No, it would be supplemental to that. We're always, we're such a 50,000 gallons a day from them, and if the plant shuts down, we'll be up to a million and a half. I don't think there'll ever be a point in time that we won't be dependent on that, simply because the enormity of how much water needed by the Town of Elkton, particularly if it takes a lot. But the fact is, if you have a well supplied in an area where you have weakness, theoretically, you have some hydrogeological weakness, that'd be the place to put it. We don't know if we can find good water there yet. You need to put a hole in the ground to see.
You just said what I was going to ask, the question about growth. We're based on amount of housing developments that we have so far for how many years, put into the system, and that's why they're not available to getting extra water, but how long are we stuck with that? Not being able to purchase?
You're not, you're only stuck with it as long as that growth projection plays.
So that could be changed.
In other words, if growth, a lot of suddenly we had enormous growth, then we change. Right now, it hasn't changed, it's been pretty flat, as a matter of fact, very flat in terms of residential development.
Well, we're looking at properties tying in online in the future. I mean, we're still trying to speculate how much more water we're going to need in the future for other developments. So, I mean, what, kind of that doesn't take into consideration. Understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying, but this particular well probably doesn't reflect growth in that area. Our master plan probably doesn't indicate blossoming growth in the Holly's workman area.
So our main concern is to get it, if we can get it up and, and at least online, at least we have backup water, in case for emergency, I understand that part. But even though we're paying for emergency water right now, I'm trying to figure out how we can subsidize that cost for what we're trying to put in place. And when we can do that, that's what I'm looking at, two or three years down the road, knowing that we can either give up so many thousand gallons of water, because we have this now as a backup. In other words, we're putting it online as a backup, we, right now, we can't use it.
Okay, I, I'm not sure if this is what you mean, but there'll, there'll not be a time when Artesian will allow us to take less than 250,000 gallons a day. We've already drew the line, they've drawn the line there, because of their capital investment. So we'll always have to draw at least that much water unless we, when we, when it's time to renew the contract, which won't be until 2019, I think. We opt not to, to draw water from them anymore, we can't forget ever do that, because we would never be able to come up with a million and a half gallons of water, or more, to take and supply us. So there's not going to be a time when we have less than 250,000 gallons, because we have backup wells. That, that's their line, they drew the line, and that's it. Never been through that.
One of the things MDE could say is without demonstrating a need. So if in three or four years there is a need, I'm sure it's going to be something else that we gotta do.
Well, our permit will be permitted for a period of time, usually that's ten years, isn't it?
Twelve, twelve years.
Okay, the Maryland Department of Planning, for example, well number four, the 500,000 gallons daily average that they permitted for that, 720,000 gallons, if I recall correctly, for maximum use, is based on a Maryland Department of Planning projection up to 2022 of our population growths. I don't know if it's a linear extrapolation or not, but in terms of the need, that, that's how they permit it. It will give you more than that. And unfortunately, we haven't shown any growth, partly at all. So we're actually, we're a funny lot in terms of what our current needs are. More water than we need, I don't want to say that, but we do. Some communities are hurting, but we're fortunate.
Can I just interject? One interesting thing MDE did say was that their projected need was based specifically on what Maryland Department of Planning has to say. So whatever plans we may have for Elkton, MDE doesn't necessarily care until Maryland Department of Planning is, is on the same page.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, then get a motion to accept KCI's proposal in the amount of $108,846.
I move that we accept KCI's proposal.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Next item I have is the update on Delaware Avenue pedestrian project. We've been attempting to stay highway to replace the bridge of the Delaware Avenue for years and years and years. They're not going to do it, they won't do it, but refuse to do it. An option that we're pursuing in addition to that was for pedestrian safety across that cross in the Big Elk Creek. They come back, they had a, they engaged a consultant, came back with a recommendation that a separate pedestrian bridge be constructed adjacent to the downstream side of that bridge, and will tie in to both sides, it's a, actually a steel, single span truss bridge, about 125 feet long that'll tie across the creek. And there'll be sidewalks or markings that tie in Howard Street through the base of Cresswell Hill. And this, the project, they estimate at $752,000 to have all this work done. It'll take a couple of years to do it, because it's a highly regulated environment in which all this is done. And as long as we're in the planning stage, the mayor was at the meeting, and we're at the very beginning of this process, I need the authority of the board to commit the town to maintaining improvements once those improvements are constructed, which would include sidewalks, ramps, for handicap, and the bridge. The absence of our commitment will stop the project, so I'm sure you, you want to do the project. The next thing, I would suggest that the town contribute some money towards this project, to grease the wheels, so to speak, of this process, get it through the planning and engineering phase, and, which is competitive. And the next step would be construction. My suggestion is $50,000. I've got confirmation from the State Highway Administration that we can use, highway use of revenue to do this, because by law, you can build, construct, or maintain highways or bridges under the name of this fund. And they confirmed that with this particular project, we could use it. So I have the sorts of income that comes out of the highway use of revenue funds, rather than out of the taxpayer's pocket directly. I would suggest that the board authorize me to send a letter to the Elkton Development, Highway Development, and get this process moved.
But one good thing out of this thing, once this thing gets going, there was always a possibility, he said, that, another phrase would be to actually get sidewalks from Cresswell all the way up to Route 40. So they're looking at that as a long-range thing to do that. I think by starting this project, it gives them an insight to follow through with the projects that are going all the way up to Route 40. So this would be just the beginning of getting sidewalks where we need them. All right, do I have a motion to accept the town administrator's proposal there?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried.
I'll keep you posted as it moves along, that's, that's the idea by accident.
I don't have any old business, Mary Jo, you have any?
No.
Well, so what about the sidewalks down there in front of the Presbyterian Church on, what, what progress or significance?
I've thrown up all the rights of entry for those properties. I don't have exhibits, but I have rights of entry done. I discussed it with the mayor, the, Dan Handley is suggesting that the cost may be $70,000 to do it all curb gutter and sidewalk according to standard. Far exceeds our, our budget in this, in the sidewalk for this year. So we need a budget for next year to do it, because we only budgeted $30,000. This would be twice that to do it, if you hired a contractor to do it. I don't think our people have the capability of moving all that curb gutter and putting all that back in. As a matter of fact, we need to get the professional concrete people to do it. So that's where we are on that.
Okay, and the second point of old business, at one of our meetings, Dan Handley, it might have been the workshop, discussed the fact that he wants to try a new procedure with yard waste. And, you know, he presented us in person and was able to ask some questions. As he continued that process, or his desire to continue that, he sends an email. Why didn't he come in, and that way we could still ask questions? Because as, as Earl said pointedly, you know, you may have a question, you may not always want to answer it on email, and you can't get an spontaneous answer.
Okay, well, I'll have to come to the next meeting. He had, his child has a blue just had, and I, that's not...
I can understand that, but I'm just saying, you know, it's more feasible, I think, in person.
I understand. I'm coming to the next meeting.
Thanks. That's it.
Okay, the other I have is, we did get some good news from Raymond Skinner, the secretary. On behalf of the Governor Martin O'Malley and Lieutenant Governor Anthony G. Brown, it is my pleasure to inform you that the Town of Elkton requests for the 2013 Community Development Block Grant, CGBG. Funds have been approved in the amount of $500,000. These funds are valuable resources for the nation, and will assist the town with improvements to the Bell Hill Water Tower. So that was very good, and that's what it takes when we get in the substantial community. And we got that all done now. It helped a lot, it really did. So that's great.
I, I have a proposal from KCI to do the work, and I already asked them to initiate the bid documents and pre-construction soil sampling around that tower. As the board mayor may or may not be aware, the tower actually doesn't sit on property owned by the Town of Elkton, it's just on a property that's granted easement from the state. So we'll coordinate all the work, which is on our tower, so we're talking to the state. But we do, I have, we do soil sampling before we do any construction, and analyze and make sure no lead present in the soil before we do this project, because the lead in the paint exceeds the threshold, and we have to remove. We did this similarly with the project, comes from the state, so. So we are initiating some work, but at the meeting on the third, I'll come back to the proposal, to do, you know, the bid packaging.
Good, okay. That was all I had. Mary Jo, anything?
The only thing I had, and we did discuss it tonight, was the, the bridge on Delaware Avenue. The pile of sand that's building up there is real, I, I mean, I know there's a lot of things you have to go through to get rid of it, but it looks awful, and it's getting larger and larger. We have the problem there anyway. Melissa, can you contact anyone, please, to see, you know, like I said?
State won't remove it, I've been down that road, they've done it, they've done it twice already, and spent $100,000 of profit.
Well, I think they need to look at it now, because it's really, it's almost crossing the whole creek.
We could do it.
Well, I...
Take it.
I mean, we're spending money, but we could be here. State doesn't oppose us spending our money for that. State doesn't oppose us spending our money, but they won't do it already, double it with this engineering, and actually remove it.
Well, can we ask them to come look at it again, especially since the funds are...
Sure, I'll send a letter to them and ask them to come look at it.
It is getting, it's getting worse. That's all I have.
Charlie?
No.
Okay, there are nothing.
I could have one more thing. I apologize. I think there was an email sent out by Cecil County Tourism. They had a breakfast yesterday, Monday morning, and they just wanted to recognize the Town of Elkton for our partnership in maybe Tourism Month. So they did give us a tip.
Very good. All right, here, nothing else. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.